How do I go with that name?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Good evening, sir. The Main Street Pagehead?
The Main Street Pagehead.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I've been a gun owner for 15 years, although I don't have a pistol permit or a handgun, therefore I have an honorary certification as a range safety officer. When I wrote this, I also am not listening to the people's comments. I suggest that issues of success or failure of current gun control measures are implicit in this conversation, so while I'm not taking up the planning board's time and politics, there are a couple of things I think we need to acknowledge. For one thing, gun control is a political topic that's so polarized that no discussion is happening. Among the political class, the two sides are in a stale war trying to win what they think is winning, throwing talking points at each other, and exploiting the issue as a vote getter. A former secretary of state has claimed behaving as though the most important concern raised by domestic terrorism in California is the gun control angle is an unfortunate example of that, attempted to leverage it for political ends. What resulted this failure of the political system and its occupants regarding gun controls is a real world complexity as the problem is replaced by cartoons. Specifically, gun owners are cartoon as being anyone of rednecks, extremists, mentally ill, or criminals. I notice those when I suggest to all the folks here who represent gun owners, but the same applies to them. My guns are not on the street, they're in my control, and I take steps to keep it that way. From the time I started shooting, the first word I heard from serious gun owners was "safety." What we the people are left with, given the failure of the political class, is to resolve the conflict ourselves between the need to end illegal gun use, which gets people killed, versus our right to both keep and bear arms, and specifically to defend ourselves with legal deadly force if it unfortunately becomes necessary. That's an issue for all of us. It's not that some people are the problem and others are the solution, and certainly no political party has shown so far that it has an answer.
Ten seconds.
Very good. To what matters, I welcome a public range in the city where I can go shoot with my guns, to rent and grab firearms. The one concern I see is security, specifically for patrons going to and from the range with their firearms, and particularly preventing them from being robbed with them, either from their cars or while walking with them. So I suggest that is actually a security concern. It seems like this could be adequately addressed with a lane for parking and for lighting, as well as reasonable open hours. I noticed from the applicant's discussion that they're already working on that. The little work of this range could be valuable if it should be canceled in the community. I hope the council can work together with the business owners of the public to make that happen. Thanks for giving us the chance to talk to you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening and thank you to the planning board for allowing us to have this. I spent 10 years on the New Falls Planning Board, dated as chairman, and I know that nights that you put in are long and stressful, and I appreciate the time. I've lived in Austin County, New Falls, for 47 years. I came from the city, but I fell in love with the rural atmosphere that New Falls used to be before it turned into the People's Republic of New Falls. I cherish the rural atmosphere. I cherish the rural traditions that I have become a part of. As a planning board member, I know also, besides the zoning and everything else we talk about, that the financial impact is important, and since the Cinco has been in operation there in Kingston, I am forced to go through Rosendale and Hurley to go to my synagogue, to go to my political events, and many other stores and shops that I support here in Kingston and nearby. I don't believe that anybody who will be at this gun range will be marching out with their weapons in defiance of the law and threatening the citizens of Kingston. I think, on the other hand, it will benefit the city of Kingston to have trained, armed, knowledgeable people on the streets, God forbid in case anything happens, and just to know the rablies in my synagogue both carry handguns legally and we hire armed security during the high holidays and the passover holiday to protect our community and our synagogue. Hopefully, this will not have to be done much longer. But please, let people like me, who have to learn some of the information that we need, I get it from gun stores, I get it from people in sporting stores, I get it from my neighbors, let me go to a licensed, knowledgeable range with other people who are trained to help me and make me a better gun owner. And please, let me be able to buy my papers and my coffee and my other things in Kingston again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gitter.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Robin Jacobowitz, I'm with the Kingston City School District Board of Education. We issued a statement regarding the shooting range, and I think you've all received a copy that I'd like to read to you. "Be resolved with the Board of Education in interest of the safety and welfare of students, faculty, and others present at the Kingston High School, hereby expresses its opposition to establishing a shooting range and gun store in close proximity to the Kingston High School campus. And we implore the resolve of the District Board of District to send a copy of this resolution to the mayor, the common council, and the planning board of the city of Kingston." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Jen Hines. I live on Andrew Street, with my three young children, and I would like to state for the record that I strongly oppose the shooting range with plans to sell guns and ammunition in our neighborhood for all of the reasons that are previously stated tonight. I feel like there's an aspect of this not being addressed. This is not just the shooting range, there are also plans for a retail space. I have questions for the developers. You say the range will be open on a membership basis, but what about the retail space? Is that for members only, or will non-members be able to buy guns and ammunition there also? I ask the planning board to really consider if this will make Midtown a safer and better place to live. In my opinion, it does not. Thank you.
I'm gonna vouch this name, I'm sorry. Carol Stu from Park Street, Kingston?
My name is Carol Strube. I live on Park Street. It seems that I'm probably the person who is closest to this proposed shooting range on the four blocks. My concern, I look back now, I grew up in a part of Wisconsin, my family were hunters, I didn't have a ski issue, so I'm not, you know, I understand, you know, why people like to have their guns, etc. I also read Jesse Smith's very informative article in the Age of Times about what it takes to get a permit in New York, and that was very reassuring. But I'm very opposed to the shooting range, particularly because of the location. I think this is completely inappropriate to put this in the middle of a Midtown neighborhood. And I also have huge concerns about the traffic down Prince Street. Those gentlemen before mentioned, it says five or six kids. I go down Prince Street all the time, like every day, and in the summertime, well, even in the winter, I have to go five, 10 miles an hour because there are kids, they play in the street, they want a place else to play. So then what does that have to do with this? People are gonna be coming from all over to go to the shooting range. They're not gonna know their way around Kingston like we know around Kingston. I feel those children are at great risk, so I just, I oppose it on the, you know, if you wanna have a shooting range, great, but don't do it in the middle of Kingston.
Carol, can you spell your last name for me, please?
S-T, oh, S-T-R-U-V-E. S-T-R. Also, I'm a psychiatric nurse, but this is not, I'm not a person that, that, I'm a psychiatric nurse, but I also have been duty for various, and I see, you know, what goes on behind the scenes in terms of suicide and so forth, that people, that people are worried.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is James Shawnessy. I reside at 11 Delta Place, Kingston, right near the Cinco. I don't have to drive through early to get home ever. Sorry, I'm Rosendale. I'm not gonna grandstand and ask a number of people who are here in opposition to the proposal to stand up, but I will say that I'm keeping track, also I'm on the Kingston School Board, so I voted in favor of the resolution that Jacobowitz read. So she'll be able to vouch for you, but I'm very much known as a data man on the Kingston City School Board, so I've been keeping track. I think I'm the 24th person to speak, and the tally I have right now is seven Kingston residents in favor, eight Kingston residents opposed, I'll make myself nine, and seven out-of-town residents in favor. There's a lot of empty space in Austin County that would be more appropriate for a gun range than in the middle of Kingston, and I think Dr. Sawyer was irresponsible in presenting this proposal. He should have known that it was going to create a lot of opposition and be very divisive to the community. I wouldn't, I don't particularly care if he builds a 25-lane shooting range if we're in a more remote area, but I don't think several hundred feet from the high school, several hundred feet from the hospital, several hundred feet from the YMCA, several hundred feet from the Midtown Center, several, less than several hundred feet from Planned Parenthood is the appropriate place to have a gun range. Ten seconds. So I'm actively opposed to it.
Thank you, Mr. Shawnessy.
Hello, Doctor. Good evening, John Crayston, sunny, 70-hour drive, town of Olster. My office is 300 feet, perhaps, away from the anticipated site of this range. I have no problem with it whatsoever. I find it deja vu over again. If I can summarize basically what Mr. Shawnessy just said, I believe it was not in my backyard. We have empty buildings coming out of our ears in the city of Kingston. We have someone who is willing to go step up, take one of those empty buildings, treat it to good use, bring in tax payer, taxing home to the city. The fact that there are five lanes would seem to indicate there is not going to be massive traffic going up and down Prince Street. If there are only five people can use the range at a single time, that to me seems like it would make five cars at a single time. I don't consider that a major traffic hazard somehow. I think we owe the, we owe the doctor a debt of gratitude that he is willing to put up a significant amount of money in hopes of taking the building, putting it to practical use. Some people don't like it, fine, there are a lot of things going on in the city of Kingston that I don't like, but if it's legal, if it's safe, for no reason we can't put it to use, put the building back into, under tax rules, make it a useful part of the city, and yes, bring people into the city for legal reasons, it would be nice to have people in. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Deborah Mills Backrey?
Hello.
Hello there.
My name, I'm Deborah Mills Backrey. I am an actual Kingston resident. I live on Spread Street. My husband and I have a small business, and I would like to express my strong opinion against any approval of shooting ranges within the city of Kingston. It is blatantly obvious to the, that our country is in the middle of an escalating crisis of gun violence. Even in a controlled environment, it is a tacit endorsement of gun use by our citizens. The Midtown location is the worst possible location in terms of the crime rates of the area, plus the proximity to the school, the Y and Planned Parenthood, which should be obvious. People will be transporting guns to and from the location in their cars or by foot, as someone pointed out, an opportunity for theft or hijacking. In another area, in another era, this range of mine has been acceptable, but in today's unobsessed climate, we just do not have sufficient ability to screen the mentally ill, and blind folks should be building their own indoor shooting range. I hesitate to speak of this publicly, but I was the victim of rape at gunpoint in my office almost 30 years ago. The perpetrator stepped around the corner with a gun pointed at my head, and no matter how trained or armed I was, I would have had no chance to react with unreasonable force. I just want people to think, do we really want to create an environment where we're all walking around like Wild West, you know? How many times do people who have guns really have a chance to defend someone, or how many times do their children get a hold of it and shoot each other? And I, there have just been way too many shootings, I can't fathom that happening in Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Frank Palatin. I'm a resident of Kingston. I live at 721 West Chester Street. I'm a business owner. I've lived all my life in Kingston, and I do not hold a gun, but I like the opportunity and I like the idea of having this gun range in Kingston. I think it's very important that if I in the future decide that I want to have a gun, that I have, I can exercise my legal right to go out and actually learn how to use a gun, use it responsibly, and use it to protect my family. So I do support this, whether I don't hold a gun, I think it's important for our community that we have a place to do this responsibly.
Thank you, sir. Ken Cooper?
Sir, I have a large voice if you can stand in front of that, right? So you got it?
Well, we have a tape recorder going on the back here, we're gonna need that. Thank you, sir.
I'm an instructor, so I have a good voice. I'm Ken Cooper, I'm a Kingston resident of the Rantham Street. I'm a New York State criminal justice certified firearms instructor, certified by the NRA through Law Enforcement Activities Division, and also all branches of the civilian division as well. I'm actually the author, original author of the Austin County Handgun Safety Program that we use now, and there was a firearm training academy in town Kingston in 1990. It was mine, it was located in 90 Prince Street. The doctor, we not realize that, and we were very appropriate, and we found, I see a lot of my students here tonight, it's good that you're all here, and I'm obviously very in favor of education, it's not a gun issue for me. I'm an educator, I've taught at Austin County Community College with our, our police chief, we're colleagues in criminal justice. I'm a college administrator as well, I have a private college across the river, and I'm very interested, and I'm fiercely interested in education. If you don't like guns, I understand that, and that's fine, but there are a lot of them in this county, and the safest way we can make gun owners, the safest way for all of us to be safe with firearms globally, is to train people correctly and safely. I'm a fierce educator, I testify a lot in court, I'm an expert witness in the use of force, and I'm, I've not met the doctor before, but I've talked to him a few times before this evening, and I would very much be interested to help advise him and other residents in the county for firearm safety and education. Thanks, Mr. Palmer, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Pat Corby Strong?
Hi, I am Pat Corby Strong. I work and live at 446 Broadway. It's less than a 30-minute walk to 90 Prince Street from where I live, on the corner of East to Rutherford Street. I've been active in the Kingston Midtown Business Association and Business Alliance of Kingston for the last 10 years, and I'm here tonight to speak about the economic impact of the project and the idea of highest and best use. Consider the investment, public and private, that is taking place in Midtown right now. For example, a mixed-use building sold for more than $1 million weeks ago right in Midtown, unthinkable, just a few years ago. The city is undertaking a multimillion-dollar rail trail project, which is designed to make our street more walkable and safe. The Kingston Consolidated School District has consolidated to a multi-million renovation of the school across the street of this facility. RBCO has just secured $1 million from the state of New York to create affordable housing just down the street. An arts district has been proposed for Midtown with an eye toward making pedestrian traffic authentic again on Broadway and the same side streets off Broadway that many of our suburban friends and neighbors consider no-go zones until very recently. So with all this positive development going on in the city of Kingston, it just strikes me that it would be unthinkable to welcome a facility that would apparently include a shooting range, guns for rent, and guns for purchase, a stone's throw from a high school housing 2,000 students. Now, other people have talked about the safety aspects, I'm here to talk about that in our development. You only need to Google the words "shooting range" and "property values" to read a host of stories from around this country of communities hard hit by the recession that are being impacted by this upsurge in gun purchases, and they're fighting these developments of shooting facilities. This would never fly in a more affluent community, in my estimation, but I welcome our neighbors from Harding Park, Olive Bridge, Red Brook, Atkore, and New Falls who are here tonight. If you want to try this in your community, I welcome that. Go for it. But this is a neighborhood that is in transition, and we are working very, very hard to keep our property values not only where they are, but bring them up finally. So we do not need a business whose marketing strategy involves exploiting people's fears of being unarmed in our communities. Zoning laws call for the highest and best use of a building, and this is surely not it. I just want to mention one final thought to Mr. Dubrowski, who questions the presence of children in the neighborhood. I walk on Prince Street and Jansen Avenue all the time, and it is teeming with children from baby carriages on up until their teenage years, so there's absolutely a dense neighborhood here with a lot of children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time and patience. Would you like to say where I live?
You're on the Hill Street, right? I've got your address here. Thank you, sir. You can hold that mic down if you wanted. There you go, thank you.
I am not a basketball player. I would be a remiss parent if I did not express my opposition to the placement of a gun range in Midtown Kingston. It's difficult for me to not see the irony and symbolism of Dr. Sawyer's intention to convert what was once a place for healing into a bastion for violence. Midtown is the heart of our city. Is this how we want our heart to be represented? I'm a parent of three children who is not in favor of a private armory being placed in our city's heart. I am a parent not in favor of securing a place of violence within reach of our school. I do not think there could be any promised safety measure that could ease a parent's mind regarding this project. We need to ask ourselves, is this the symbol? Is this the legacy we and this board want our children to inherit? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Hi, I'm Brian Andrews. I'm a resident at 19 Van Gassman Street, Kingston, New York, also a business owner. I work with children here in Midtown, and I'm not opposed to responsible licensed pistol carriers providing a place to practice, you know, efficiency. I, and I'm definitely not opposed to, you know, what Scott can do with that building because he believed it would be the best way we're doing the project in the present. I, I do oppose the project there in Midtown. I mean, there's a lot of safe places in upstate New York that you can put a gun range, you can place a gun range, and I feel that in that heavily populated area, that's not the safest place to have a gun range. I'm, I'm also, I also feel that within a community that's changing at a rapid rate of revitalization of Midtown, the Arts District happening, affordable housing, bringing more people into Midtown, I think that the revitalization of what's happening in Midtown, Kingston is bringing people to Kingston because it's safer for them and their children, and a safer place to raise families. That's why I came here to Kingston. I am afraid, I have to admit, I'm afraid of the type of people that may come to the area to some extent, you know, pistol, you know, because of the type of children that we have that sometimes may visually pose a threat to people that, that carry, you know, that's usually a problem of mine, it's right down the block. This project is supposed to be, or proposed, we down the block right around the corner from the high school, of course, we kind of constantly talk about YMCA, and my house is literally a block and a half away. So my feel is that if, if anything, we can, we can build anywhere, $500,000, I think the doctor was posting, put into the project, you can build a house or a range anywhere, and I just feel that Midtown Kingston is not the place in close proximity of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
I can read my name, it didn't show up on the other sheet. Is it all ready for this?
Yeah, when we get to the end of the list here, we'll ask if there's anybody else who wants to speak, if I can. I can't read the next speaker, but it's, you can see a person from 60 West Chester
First one we call and die is cool, and I had first to that closed the door on the floor, it was me. But making the point that this is a hobby, a hobby, so I imagine returning to New York or, or before I turn on the news to hear this. And Dr. Sawyer didn't feel important enough to sit here and listen to his neighbors talk about their concerns, positive and negative, about his bringing firearms, ammunition, threat, and concern to this neighborhood. I am Dr. Sawyer, and I am not. I love Scott Duck. I hope he'll still love me. This city is weak. Dr. Sawyer and I moved in around the same time. I moved in 1997. 1997, we watched the city go up bad and down. This city, with new government, even with current government, even with the last government, was getting, that they were not simply running the city, but they are running a company on which we are all stockholders. Every dollar that you have in your home will either shrink or corrode depending upon what this board does. Anybody, again, I respect people to have guns. I want code gun control, but I respect people having guns. I say to Dr. Sawyer, I say to Scott, could it be less expensive for you to, like, move it someplace else, preferably either underneath or on top of the police department? Because all sorts of conversations about security mean nothing to me when I see a bunch of Marines getting bow down on Marine base. It doesn't quite suggest that the security systems work, ever. This is an economic model, ten seconds, sorry. It's an economic model, and you think that putting a gun range or a, a marijuana dispensary It's an economic model, and you think that putting a gun range or a marijuana dispensary or a parole board building at the beginning of Disney World? If you think that's good, this is a great idea. This is a great idea. We are Disney World. A million people used to, like, swim out the river to come to the city to go to the beach. Now we're shadowed by Woodstock, Sardines, Hudson, New Falls. This city is reemerging, and on the very lowest level, I'm willing to bet I can find almost like a hundred percent unanimous conviction that it's fantastic that a tobacco company cannot advertise in a ballpark. Billboard advertising is an extraordinary threat, and somehow I feel personally, I feel less threatened about the cigarette. You're gonna put a gun sign out? Do you think the parole board building helps the value of Broadway? Excuse me. Do you think that as world war disinformation? Sorry. If you can have yourself Mr. Secretary, the incontinence sign, when I first moved in, it was the first thing in the circle. I cracked up with my friend, said to me, what's with the incontinence about Kingston? I said, I don't know. It's a company. You're running a company here. Our property values depend on what you do. This is not a question. This is a serious, wholeheartedly question in this country, in this community, and further introduction to it is unlawful. It is unlawful. It is like working towards peace while you're unsettling.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Joe Leoni?
Joe Leoni, I live in Tilson. I'm president of Federated Sportsmen's Club, Olster County. For over forty years, the Federation did the majority of the training for the handgun safety course in order to obtain a permit in Olster County. Over ten percent of the county residents have a concealed carry permit. These are doctors, lawyers, nurses, teachers, professional people. Safety is our concern. We reviewed the preliminary plans for this range. We see no issues with it. The planning board's concern should be regarding the zoning and planning, and to your commend and to your credit, the stuff that, so forth. The Kingston School Board should be concerned about providing quality education for our kids and affordable cost to taxpayers. This project was proposed anywhere else in the city of Kingston or the county. The Kingston School Board would still be against it, and so will the organizations that are against it tonight. This is issue that should be about a business proposal by a prominent doctor and a member of the community bringing business to Midtown Kingston. The traffic that it will bring will provide businesses with additional business, sales tax revenue, and increased property taxes. This application should be about that. It should be about gun control, environmental justice, and somebody always has to bring up lead. The city of Kingston has a strong environmental background, and this will be taken through the calls regarding lead and the other environmental issues. If the Kingston School Board, the local clergy, and the city of Kingston want to discuss gun control, this isn't the place for it. Invite us in. We'd love to have that discussion. We'll sit down when you can do it. But this is about a project that's beneficial. If there's any issues of that ten percent of the population that has carry permits that had caused problems, bring me that information. I'd like to see it. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Jordan Scruggs?
Yeah, my name is Jordan Scruggs. Good evening. I'm Jordan Scruggs. I'm the associate pastor and director of outreach at St. James United Methodist Church, which means that I spend a lot of time in Midtown. Most of my time in Midtown, in fact. I work at Carrot and Soup Kitchen quite a bit. We provide people who are homeless or facing their homelessness and other serious issues with opportunities for success to transition. And I have to say that I'm really concerned about placing a gun range like this in the city of Kingston. As several people have said before, I am not opposed to the presence of guns in general. I'm from the South, so my dad probably has more guns in his state than this entire room has combined. That makes it that I believe that Midtown is the place for us to do this, and I would just like to echo something that Drew said earlier and reiterate that my major concern in terms of safety is vigilante justice. If you have a group of people who don't know the community, and several people are here from outside the city of Kingston who are coming in, right, if we have this gun range, if you have a group of people coming in who don't know the community and who may or may not have some kind of racial bias, as most of us do, the community that I work in is predominantly black and brown. And the last thing that we need is a Trayvon Martin or George Zimmerman case here. And with the heightened racial tension in this country right now, I ask you to really, really, really strongly consider what we might open ourselves up to, being that this would be right across the street from Kingston City High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Roberts?
Hello?
Hi there.
My name is Derek Roberts. I am from the Kidsey, but I've been coming here to Kingston so long often, and I feel like I'm almost a native of this one city. And I'm not going to speak on it, but then I started to realize very frightening that if you were to put a rifle, a pistol range, or shooting range in the middle of Kingston High School or near the YMCA, that you do not exactly agree with me, because I would see that it's similar to putting a rifle range in next to the Kidsey or middle schools because the fact of the matter is, that is not real. You could have a rifle range, a shooting range, because I'm not against a person, a legalized gun owner, having to practice and train it, because I had practiced and trained in the Kidsey for the NRA, but they had the shooting range way outside the city limits. And I can, you know, if the people who are looking for a rifle range or shooting range here could probably find a lot of places outside city limits because it would be much safer and much more easy accessible to the people who want to learn how to protect themselves and learn to shoot better. Also, because you're right near a school area, they are, could be a problem because kids, being kids, will probably, may want to think that someone might have left their gun inside their range and may try to break it, and this will happen, and who knows? If anybody could do, accidentally get their firearm, which does happen, and the kid gets it, then it could be very serious for the owner and it could be definitely serious for the person, the youth at risk. So I would say to all the responsible gun owners, I advise you, but I would please try to convince them to take their range, the shooting range outside of the city limits would be safer for everyone concerned, and it would be much more convenient for everybody. Thank you for your patience. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Eddie Alio Jr.?
Hello? My name is Alio Jr. I'm Tilson, New York. I've lived Tilson, New York since nineteen seventy-four, the majority of my life. Again, I think Joe Leoni and Ken Cooper said it best. This is a planning board issue about business going into a community that will raise taxes, bring people, bring business, support the local communities. It's zoned correctly, and that's what should be the main focus of the planning board. As far as the gun issues, it is what it is. It goes back to education, as Ken Cooper had said. I happened to take Mr. Cooper's class at ninety Prince Street twenty-five years ago as well. As a result of that class and other education that I received, I'm a very proficient gun user, gun owner. So please think of the facts when considering business moving into a location to serve the needs of the customers and clients. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Bob Sills?
My name is Bob Sills. I'm a resident of Kingston. I live on sixty-six Fairmont Avenue. And what I'd like to say is, the many issues that we brought up about gun safety this evening, violence in our communities, most of the violence with guns in America is done for three reasons: abuse, irresponsibility, and ignorance. Anything that would increase the education and responsibility and decrease the abuse of firearms, I am absolutely for. And as for the young woman who happened to bring in racial profiling of the situation, most young African-American men are killed by most young, by many young African-American men in their own neighborhoods. Take Chicago, New York City, and many other metropolitan areas. These are gangs. This is irresponsible use and abuse of firearms. Neither, neither would be encouraged by the use of a shooting range that would decrease our reputation. And neighborhoods with responsible gun owners are a lot safer than neighborhoods with irresponsible and ignorant people with guns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sills. Eric Stock, or Stack, I'm sorry, Eric. Stock, okay. Thank you.
My name is Eric Stock. I'm a fifth-generation Kingston resident. As was said by Joe Leoni of the Federation, the planning board should be concerned with zoning, not with gun control issues. This is an issue that we can actually address, unlike many times with gun control issues and putting border laws into effect. This allows us to provide training for people of the community. Proper training and safety is very important here, and that's really the issue that we need to look at, because with proper training and safety, you can mitigate firearms accidents. The shooting sports were once taught in schools and continue to be done in the Olympics. We no longer see this done in schools, and, you know, that has taken something away from the youth. You know, they have not had the opportunity to handle a firearm, learn proper safety procedures, and this is all something that would be addressed by this facility. So I'm hoping that the zoning board, the planning board, looks more at this as a zoning issue, and the city supports this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. Mr. Stock was the last person who has signed up for to speak tonight. Is there anybody who had to sign up who would like an opportunity to do so at this point, to speak? Come forward, please. You could, sir, just speak your name for the record, please, and your address.
I'm Telly Bocontini. I live in Bloomington in the town of Rosendale. I didn't take any notes, and I'm going to try and make the shortest way to this time of staying late. In my opinion, this project should be approved, and quite honestly, I think we should have projects such as this in every single town in this county. But this project should be approved for the very reason, reasons that most of the people in opposition to it had brought forward an objection to it, because projects such as this are what will solve many of the problems we have in our communities as far as violence is concerned. Not gun violence, violence that is caused by people, not guns. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bocontini. Anyone else? I'd like to state your name and address for the record, please. Steve Britton, for you and dear, I expect your last name, sir?
B-R-I-T-T-O-N.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'm a resident for you, and I've also worked in the city of Kingston for about twenty-seven years. I've been a resident of the county for over forty years now. I was also on the zoning board of appeals for a soaps for about seven years, chairman for a while. And I really want, I would really hope that you guys keep this strictly to the zoning and the planning issues. There's been a lot of issues here that really don't seem to pertain to what you guys have to review. Also, I'm in favor of it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Britton.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Allison Constance. I own Art Bar Gallery in Midtown Kingston, and I just wanted to say I'm opposed to it. I have people come in and say, is it safe around Midtown? And I tell them it's actually coming up. Everything's up and coming, and then, I don't know, I just have to say I'm opposed to it. I have a bad impact on my building just in case, you know, coming out and this may, you know, figure out.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Constance. Anybody else? Okay, I want to thank all of the speakers and the audience members. I appreciate how everyone was considerate of the views and opinions of those who spoke. Planning staff has made note of your questions and concerns, and also Scott Dutton has indicated at the beginning of his presentation that he and his client will use the time between this meeting and January's meeting to address the perfect questions for tonight. As I mentioned previously, because of the change of the application, we're going to be taking this proposal tonight, and we will re-repeating the public hearing at the January meeting, January eleventh, two thousand sixteen. We'll take a couple minutes to this. Go ahead, Robert. To call, close to the call of the chair, and in that respect, I think that we do it that way. All right, so folks, we will have another public hearing because of a change next one. As far as tonight goes, we're going to close this particular public hearing. So at this time, I make a motion that we take with this application, here, close the public hearing. Second, second by Robert Jacobson on the paper. Close. Gary. Thank you, folks. Folks, we do have some other business tonight, so if you actually have more, we'd actually appreciate it.